All right, at six o'clock we'll call this meeting of the Mount Vernon City Council to order. At six oh two, we do have a quorum present. Appreciate everybody for being here. Marty's gonna lead us in our implication.
Dear Lord, we just want to first thank you for this beautiful day and for this beautiful Mother's Day weekend that we just celebrated. We thank you so much for bringing us here safely tonight. We just ask that you guide over us and help us make decisions for the betterment of our community and that are consistent with your word. Finally, we just ask that you watch over us and our fellow community members as we travel home safely tonight. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Please join for our pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as small.
All right, so we'll jump right into our swearing in ceremony.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of office of councilperson of the state of Texas and will to the best of my ability preserve protect and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States and of this state so help me God.
All right, the council has had the opportunity to review the consent agenda, including the April meeting, the February and March financial reports and the proclamation on National Historic Preservation Month. Do I need to read that? I've got it. I've got it. Yeah, I've got it on my lap. Okay, City of Mount Vernon proclamation, whereas the historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability, and whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds, and whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as people, and whereas National Preservation Month twenty twenty five is cosponsored by Historic Restorations and the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Now therefore, I bradheim and do proclaim May twenty twenty five is National Preservation Month and call upon the people of the city of Mount Vernon, Texas to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance and witness whereof I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Mount Vernon to be affixed this twelfth day of May twenty twenty five. All right. Items of community interest. Well, I know the... Oh, we gotta vote on that. I'm sorry. Yes, any vote for approval of consent agenda. Motion from Mary, second from Marty. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, sorry about that. Items of community interest. I know we kicked the One Act Play Kids off to go hopefully bring them state championship back, but either way, they're gonna do a great job like they always do contenders every year, so. We can talk later on too, but me and Craig had a great meeting today with Tex dot in Paris, so that was, we'll talk about that during discussion items later on. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to share?
You wanna talk about share the load or carry the load?
Yeah.
Somebody's load?
Carry the load. That's Memorial Day weekend, right?
It's May twenty third.
Yeah.
It's here on the square on Friday, May twenty third. It's from nine to two. The fire department's gonna cook burgers for everybody.
Right. Always look forward to that. Anything else? All right. We don't have anybody signed up for citizen participation, so at six oh seven I'll open our public hearing. The purpose of this hearing is to hear evidence for or against the Economic Development Corporation's recommendation to incentivize a request made by Melissa Davis, DBA Big Dog Sports and Collectibles, to provide assistance with graduated rental assistance for the business located at one eleven East Dallas Street, Mount Vernon, Texas, and the amount of twelve thousand six hundred dollars to be reimbursed monthly for eighteen months as half of each month's rent. And to hear evidence for or against the Economic Development Corporation's recommendation to incentivize a request made by Samantha Dean, owner of Infinity Tans, Mount Vernon, to provide assistance with existing business structure assistance for the business located at one oh two Jackson Street, Suite Two, Mount Vernon, Texas, and the amount of twelve thousand dollars to be reimbursed after purchase as an installation of the new tanning unit. We heard both of these at the last council meeting, so. And I think it's fine that they're not here too, since they both came to speak to it prior. But we would need a, we won't need a motion at this moment. This is just to close the, close the public hearing at six oh eight, so. So writing our items to be considered. Item number two. Consider an act upon approval of resolution twenty five zero eight, EDC incentive for Infinity Tans, Mount Vernon existing business structure, the amount might exceed twelve thousand dollars for purchase of tanning unit and installations cost. So if there's any discussion, we can have that now. But if not, we just need a motion to approve their request. The EDC has made that recommendation.
I'll do a motion to approve.
Motion from Rebecca and a second from Marty. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item three is consider an act upon approval of resolution twenty five dash zero nine, the EDC incentive for Big Dog Sports and Collectibles in the amount of twelve thousand six hundred dollars for rental assistance for eighteen months and half of rent each month. I went by and checked it out, by the way, if y'all hadn't, after our meeting the other day. That store is cool.
It is.
Yeah, they've put a lot of heart into that thing, so. Anyway, we would need a motion to approve unless there's any discussion.
I'll do a motion to approve.
Motion from Rebecca?
A second.
Second from Mary. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider an act upon appointment of mayor protein will hold off till next meeting. Mark had to move tonight. He gone tonight. He couldn't get back in town quite with his work. And he is game to serve in that role again, so we'll take that topic up next, next meeting. Item five, consider an act upon approval of twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, city board appointments as presented. There's a list of those that you can scroll through if y'all haven't yet. There's a... You'll bring them up. There you go. Unless anybody has any comments around this, I just encourage you to take a look at it when you can, just acknowledge who's volunteering to serve on our committees and boards. It's really pretty well diversified, which is what I like to see. It's not the same people doing the, you know, sitting on all the same committees and boards. It's, we got quite a few folks in the community serving, so I'd pat them on the back, tell them thanks when you see them as much as anything. So, we would need a motion to approve the committee appointments unless anybody has any discussion. Motion from Marty and
A second.
Second from Mary. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Okay, the rabies authority. Consider an act upon appointment of local rabies authority. This is kind of a... This is something we have to do, right? This is making Jennifer the rabies hammer. No need, no need to come up on this one, Jennifer, I don't think, but we do need a motion to approve Jennifer as our rabies authority.
I'll do a motion to approve.
Motion for Rebecca, second from Mary. All in favor?
Aye.
I feel safer knowing Jennifer's over it too. Number seven, consider an act upon approval of resolution twenty five oh seven for a proposal for the design, construction, administration, and grant management for Little Creek Park project in Mount Vernon. Important to note, Texas Parks and Wildlife Department will reimburse the city's forty thousand dollars towards the design of the project.
Background on this council is that, as you remember, we received one Texas Parks and Wildlife grant for, for improvements to the Little Creek Park. And as part of the approval process, a representative from Texas Parks and Wildlife came out to visit the park. And when she came out here, she said, y'all need to go ahead and apply for the second grant for phase two of the project immediately, because she felt like we could get it funded. And in, in, in doing so, we've asked HHS to go ahead and do that. We're pretty much assured that it will be funded when we do apply, but it will save us money on the design and also on the construction if we do both phases at one time. And if you look, if you took a minute to look at the proposed plan, it's really cool. We'll be able to do everything that we want to, to
Including restrooms.
Including restrooms and including a amphitheater, so it's, it's really going to...
And one project will roll right into the other.
Right. And we won't, you know, there'll be design fees, but we won't really see any construction fees or anything like that for another, a minimum of another year. So, this is really gonna be a twenty six, twenty seven, twenty seven, twenty eight project. So, but once completed, it's gonna be awesome.
Yeah.
It's really gonna be awesome.
Cool stuff.
It's really cool stuff.
Yep.
Does the court enhancement where the tennis courts are, is that gonna have pickleball? I know we've had people ask about that.
It's gonna be, it's going to be pickleball. It's gonna be just pickleball. We're gonna, we're gonna let the high school handle all the ace tennis players and the old people are gonna be down there playing pickleball.
I was walking the other day and somebody had set up temporary on the basketball court and they were playing.
They think that they can do, how many did he say? Two courts, two pickleball courts out of that, and we anticipate that they will be booked all of the time.
Yeah.
So, no other discussion on that, we need a motion to approve.
Do a motion for approval?
Motion from Rebecca?
A second.
Second from Marty.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, item number eight, consider change to the fee schedule for inspections and adding a fee for animal surrenders. Recommended changes are highlighted in yellow. You wanna open that one? We don't have a surrender fee today, I guess. Is that what it is, or is it small?
We don't have a surrender fee. And when, when an animal's surrendered to us, we are responsible for making sure it has all its vaccinations and eventually gets spayed and neutered and all of that stuff, and it's costing us money before we can... And really, also, the fact of having a surrender fee will probably help us deter people just dumping animals on us. Okay. Now, the surrender fee, we have discussed it internally and that can be adjusted. If they, if they bring an animal that has already been spayed and neutered or...
Current on vaccine.
Current on vaccines, it would be reduced. But we ballparked that with other, other counties around here and we felt like a hundred dollars was... What did the state recommend?
Two hundred. And then, like, if, if it had been spayed, neutered, all of its shots, everything was current, then we would reduce it or even waive it. Depending on the reasons now.
We felt that was a little high for our market here, but, you know, so we'd cut it in half and then we also retain the, um, the ability to waive it altogether in certain circumstances.
So, I would have a question. When they've implemented that, how much more animals are they seeing just...
We haven't started yet, but we're
No, I mean other counties or whoever suggested the prices.
On a surrender, a surrender fee. Yeah, somebody passes away and the family couldn't adopt it or whatever reason it may be, just can't have it, yeah.
And we're gonna be limited, like, how many we can take, so.
And another thing I think that'd be good for the council to know, I don't remember if I've written this or not, but the, the capacity of the shelter is based on a formula that is what, Kathy?
It's four dogs per hour per person, and so we have eight persons, so thirty-two animals per day. That would be a lot.
That would be pretty much one person.
The only thing they do is
That's all they do, is cleaning cages and taking care of the animals. So, we're trying to kind of feel our way through all this. I think I, I wrote in the la, in the last email to y'all that we, they did some significant improvements to the shelter this last week and leveled some concrete and created some drains. We're not ready to put the kennels back in there because we have to seal it and epoxy the floor. And then once that's done, then we'll be able to, um...
Right now, we're working on the ventilation.
And the ventilation. And that, that's, so there's still some improvements that are, that are needing to be made.
Before we just open up to accepting
Everybody, and also security cameras. We're looking at some, getting some security cameras. So, but overall, it's, it's working pretty well. And Paul's has been a great partner and the county's been a great partner writing checks, so, which we love. So, you know, right now, it's, it's, it's a good thing. And if y'all haven't toured, let us know because we really need to take a look at it. It's pretty cool. They are.
Except they really don't want to be named.
Yeah.
Really?
Cause they don't want everybody going to. No, we're very grateful for that.
And these are things recommended by the state, so we're just knocking out the list of things we had to do.
Yeah.
Not luxury items, just things they said we had to do, so we're close to. You got volunteers already showing up? I know I got a couple that work for me.
Yes.
Can we volunteer?
So, we did get our volunteer applications out a week and a half ago. We're still receiving some in. We've gotten about six in, but I know there's gonna be more coming in as the days progress.
I think you're gonna have a lot of volunteers.
Yeah.
As long as you make it fun, you know, where they wanna come out and be a part of it, not just to grudge, you know, to grudge, to something, go clean up a dirty pen, you know, it's, make it fun.
I was gonna say, the state question is that we do the cleaning, the fun stuff, like walking the dogs and playing with the puppies and all that, we found a lot of people.
You'll find they'll help with the other two though. Yeah. Well, if there's no further discussion, we, uh, we would need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion from Mary?
At a hundred?
At a hundred.
Second.
Second from Rebecca. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item nine, consider an act upon approval of KSA Engineers Task Orders one zero three nine five five, water treatment plant permit renewal, and one zero four one five two wastewater treatment plant permit renewal, renewing discharge permits.
This is our state required permits. They come up for renewal. Is it annually or is it every five year? Every five years, and it just happens to be time for that to happen right this year for both plants. And KSA's gonna submit paperwork on that, make sure that we're all tucked away. A couple of things I do wanna mention while I've got you here with, with regard to the, gotta brag on our guys a little bit. Water treatment qual, the water quality in Mount Vernon, I would hesitate to say, has never been as good as it is right now. It is, it is amazing. And the plant operations are smoother than they've ever been. Everything is getting in compliance. Everything is all tucked away. The wastewater treatment plant is rocking. I mean, it is just, our, our, the, the SGL, which is our lab that tests for a lot of different things, ammonia, some, called, something called BOD solids, particulates and things like that. They've never been this low in the history of the plant. And this is all a good thing. I mean, they're, it's operating better than it's ever operated, so.
The ammonia is point zero one, and that's what we've been
Struggling with ever since I've been here. Yeah. So... You guys can, as council members, can rest assured that the, you know, the wastewater and the water treatment for our city is in extremely good shape right now.
And James at Wastewater is bringing the testing in house, so it's gonna save us a lot.
Yeah.
A ton of money. I think he said that we're hav, he, I, I mean, it was thousands of
We say SBL, thirty thousand dollars a month.
Yeah. And I think the only test we have remaining
Right now, it's two thousand.
Yeah, so it's, yeah.
It's working.
So, we viewed that waste part and it's amazing. I mean, wow. From the first time we went there, it's kinda great, but I would like to go see the water plant.
Yeah, we need to get a cake for him too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Banana pudding.
Get like a blue ocean cake on this one.
Yeah, with blue ocean. I did like the other one.
I did too. Yeah, maybe for the next workshop, just do a little come and go before that if you'd like.
You wanna do, you wanna
At the water plant.
Only do the party then too, the twenty seventh?
Is it the twenty seventh our workshop date? You could have it like five o'clock or something, go there for a half hour and then come here.
Yeah.
Set it for five before the next meeting, if you don't, you check it out.
Nothing gets you to participate in the state council.
It was pretty good.
We have pictures, we'll share with you sometime.
Or my thinking it wasn't.
Looked bad, but it was good.
Oh, how?
Okay, so we
Banana pudding.
Okay.
Just to keep us, keep us on track, we will need a, we need a motion to approve the two task orders.
That's May twenty seventh.
And you want that at five o'clock?
Yeah, five, yeah.
I'll do a motion to approve.
All right, motion from Rebecca?
A second.
Second from Marty. Sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks. All right, item ten, we've got some personnel policy updates. Consider an act upon amendments to personnel policy.
These have been vetted through all the department heads and, and we're presenting them to you. Some of it is certificate pay. We've never had certificate pay before or...
Not for Agman. It's always been related to department.
Right. So, but our, our city secretaries and assistant city secretaries and finance officers all have to have certification too, just like for the departments. So, we're implementing some certificate pay at a level similar to what the other departments get. We're also making some changes on the, the training reimbursement requirement. In the past, we haven't had a requirement for reimbursement of somebody. Somebody could come here and get trained. We'd spend the money on them and could be gone in a year and we'd never see that money back. So, we're gonna say that, you know, if they
We started this last year with the police
With the police department.
And it's worked well, so.
So, we're going across the board with the other departments. And hours, working hours, y'all are already aware of that. We've, we've been under that for a few months now. Seven thirty to five Monday through Thursday and eight to twelve on Fridays. And then also on our HASA contribution, which is part of our benefit package, the only change there is that we're going to prorate that. If you're hired, right now, if you're hired a month before the end of the fiscal year, you get the full two thousand dollars or
Sixteen hundred.
Sixteen hundred dollars. So, we don't think that's right, so it's gonna be, that's gonna be prorated for the amount of time that you're here.
It's, it's a hundred thirty-three dollars.
So, and also vacation time now is gonna, uh, uh, maybe taken in one hour increments and then sick leave.
Instead, we're changing it so that people aren't taking minutes of vacation.
Minutes?
Yeah, that happens.
Yes. So, if you're gonna take vacation, you have to take at least an hour.
Not fifteen minutes.
Really?
Interesting. The things you didn't know you had to put in personnel policy.
Until you have plenty of employees. But overall, we got, our employees are great.
See if they have any questions or discussion around those items.
So, what is the top certificate pay for other, like, it's two hundred? But, but this one, I'm still trying to wrap my head around. It, it could be seven hundred and fifty dollars a month if you got all of those certifications.
But she said that it took a year per certification.
But do they overlap, like, registered municipal clerk and certified municipal clerk, master municipal clerk? What, what makes a master?
The two internationals are countrywide, so you, it's almost impossible. We're too small in Louisiana. She was just trying to cover all the bases. If, if you're not able to, you can take them out. Because there is an international municipal clerks association.
But not here. But not here.
It's, it's United States of America.
Yeah. I just think that could get kinda steep. I mean,
It could, you had all of them, couldn't it?
If you had all of them, or, I mean, if they, if they're, if...
Wouldn't that be controlled by giving that employee permission to get the training that was required to do that? See what I'm saying? It'd be controlled on the front end by saying, that's not necessary, you know, you don't need all that.
Which will only apply to the job that you're actually obtaining at this point.
And scaled with the size of the city.
So technically, they wouldn't get all of that.
They technically wouldn't get all of that. And I don't have any problems with going ahead and taking, you know, the certified and the... Uh, the certified internationals out of there.
The certified and the master.
Yeah.
We don't need it.
The detective's rated municipal clerk, and then the next step would be certified municipal. And then master municipal.
We could always revisit that down the road if we felt like we needed that certification, if it's really not necessary.
Yeah, I mean, if it's not necessary, my thought was if they overlap, if one, you know,
Well, it seems like if they
Why would you?
Yeah. It, it seems like if you're gonna have something like that, it should be
Yeah, max it at something.
That's how you handle it.
Yeah, if the certified municipal clerk is higher than the Texas registered, then the certificate pay should be maybe two hundred and fifty or three hundred a month, and then you drop the Texas municipal certification.
Right.
The next sense like that?
Yes, I'm, I think it needs to be capped at something.
I mean, there should be a bomb. Yeah, it gets capped at something.
Yeah.
So, I think we should revisit that.
Instead of one hundred and fifty, two and two fifty and whichever one Trump's leading. I guess that one, they don't add on.
Right, yeah, they're not cumulative.
Y'all could make that change now if you want.
Probably should.
So, considering that you wanna
So, adjust it to where
Two fifty and
Or just cap it at something, um...
Maybe it's one, one fifty and two, cap it at two hundred if somebody happens to go get the, the master. Just isn't it gonna say and do that, but I'm just saying for reference.
Yeah.
But they don't, they don't, uh, they don't add a lot.
They don't, they are not cumulative.
Yeah. So, not a cumulative. And set the base at a hundred?
Um...
Or one fifty?
One, one fifty.
One fifty. And then two, and then two fifty.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that one, yeah.
So, one fifty for Texas, two hundred for certified, and two fifty for the master municipal. You'll make a motion like that so that it, and then they're, they're not, um...
It's one, one or the other.
Yeah, they do not
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Marty has that sound?
It's good.
That palatable, all right.
So you just need a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to
You can read it.
I'll second that motion.
Uh, change the certification pay to one fifty, two, and capped at two fifty for the master.
And not to, and not to.
Not, not cumulative.
One replaces the other.
One replaces the other.
That sounds good.
I'll second.
Got a second from Marty and all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank y'all. Um, that was for the whole update. Y'all give that, being for the whole person of policy, just with that?
Yes, yes. Yeah.
Right.
Change, okay. All right, that's, uh, that's all for our action items, so we're moving to discussion items. And, um, Judge Lee, thank y'all for being here tonight, too.
Thank you.
Just under your guys, your teams coming in, but thank y'all for being here tonight.
Hey, we might, we might as well go home there over and mark it. This won't be.
I know, there's some truth to that. Um, I'll kick us off and then let, let Craig take it over. We had a, a trip up to Paris today to go meet with textile leadership and and that was, that was a real good meeting. We've got this, um, the pipeline, the raw water line from Lake Cypress Springs that we've got the, uh, funding for and, and we're hopefully gonna get about ninety percent of it forgiven, it looks like. But the old pipeline in place is concrete and asbestos, and we're worried about having to go take the whole thing out and what all that cost is gonna be, 'cause that's not in our, that's not in our budget that we've planned, and the good news is they're like, let's leave it in place, but we're gonna have to fill it full of concrete, which is not unheard of at all. So, we got, got good news on that. I'll let you take on over, but I'm, I'm not still the comment, but there's more discussion than that. It's just a very productive day at, at Paris today.
Yeah, and we also had a really healthy discussion regarding the, uh, uh, the exits and the entrance ramps. And, uh, they're, they're going to look at particularly the, uh, the two exit ramps. Um, uh, the, on the eastbound side, you know, my Dukes and, and my Dairy Queen. And, uh, see what we can do to formulate some type of, some type of solution, a short-term solution and possibly a long-term solution that would include possibly going with one-way surface roads at some time in the future. And this may be ten years in the future. The short-term solution, we feel like we need to do something with the exit ramps just for safety. And they've, they've agreed that, uh, in particular, uh, with the, uh, uh, once the, the, the lithium plant is constructed and operational, the truck traffic, the additional truck traffic, that not just won't be coming out of there, but will be going in there, that's gonna be a consideration. And as y'all know, that's a hard right, right after you exit that Dukes there to turn right into, uh, where the entrance into the plant's gonna be. So, we, we're just trying to prevent issues from coming in the future, but they've been very cooperative. They're gonna run some numbers for us. Uh, they indicated that, um, one way to get, to get things moved up a little bit faster, if there's some type of local contribution. Doesn't have to be a lot, but, um, they were shooting to reconfigure everything, probably about a fifteen million dollar project on a shorter term. Of just one or two exits, we're probably looking at a couple of million. So, um, we'll, we'll see where it goes, but they've been, they were, we spent an hour and a half with them.
Yeah.
You know, they're super cooperative. And the fact that, that we've gotten the, a clear pathway, we were very concerned about having to remove the old water line. Uh, we figured that was probably three to five million dollars just for the removal of that. Uh, the concrete may cost us a million dollars to fill it with, but that's, that's a lot better than, you know, the alternative. And that will also speed up the project significantly. So, it was all good.
Yeah.
It was all good.
Got clearance to move the pipeline to the other side of the highway and come down there easement, so there was just several things we kinda had in our head, we're like, okay, I think that we, we can't have any additional costs going, I think, 'cause it's already quite a, it's quite a beast already.
It's a ten point seven million dollar project right now, so it's, it's a big one. So, that's, um, that's good. As far as, um, we, as far as just other projects that we've got going, I've told the council and some of, some of the folks from the county get the, uh, um, updates too. Uh, we've got some street projects that we're looking at. Uh, and if it ever quits raining and dries out, we'll be able to get to them. Uh, uh, Carthale and Arrington and also probably East Elmwood Street are, are two at the, at the top of the list. Um, we've got, um, we have submitted and scored pretty well on our, uh, community development grant for the, for the plaza. And we are probably gonna get awarded, and that's a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, some matching on that, but that might help us completely redo the plaza wall and maybe even do some more landscaping, stuff like that, but more's to be seen on that. Um, so I think that's, right now, that's the only.
We scored six.
We scored six out of the entire state, so that's good. That, that's real good. Um, so, do we have any other, we don't have any other grants out right now than that one, do we? But, you know, overall, things are going pretty good. We're knocking, knocking some things up, off our list, aren't we?
Yeah, yeah. Can't wait to get the plaza done. We're gonna have the money to do that.
Yeah.
It looks like we're gonna have the money to do it. We got somebody coming, and I won't speak to it, 'cause it's confidential, but I got some, some funds that are gonna come into that. Not just local grant stuff or whatever, that folks just happy with seeing what's happening in Mount Vernon, wanna help us out, so. There's a, it's, it's some really cool times around Mount Vernon right now. This county is, I think, is a shining star right now in this state, but it is, there's, there's some fun stuff going on. When people come to you and say, hey, we wanna help y'all out, so, like, really? Say, we love coming down here, love how it looks, and we just wanna see if we can help some more. Okay, let's do that.
Sounds good, yeah.
So Judge, uh, y'all, do y'all have some others coming or is it?
I might just be speaking to y'all long.
Well, we're glad you, we're glad you're here.
I guess, I guess, yeah, all the stats I want to show.
Well.
Okay, six, seven, six forty-five, that's not.
Oh, okay. Well, we're not, we're, we're fine. Here's, uh, I think Scott's coming out right now, so I see, I see some coming in.
We've put this table up here for y'all.
This one?
This, yeah.
Got you water?
I don't know, actually, I'll do that.
We even got you bottled water.
Yeah.
Oh, well, I thought you said who put that up?
No, we put that up for y'all, so y'all feel official.
Yeah. Was one we've been waiting on. It's just me either, still.
Yeah, here comes Toby, I see him. Oh, and the other Scott.
That's, that's for y'all, Scott.
That's for y'all.
Okay.
That's for y'all.
They're walking in, they're, they're at nine.
Hey, Josh.
Where's, where's that?
He had some, uh, problem with his eye. He had, uh, had to bail at the last minute, so.
Come on up, sit at the table. Good to see you, Toby. Scott.
Toby Scott, Toby Scott. They got his name changed to Toby Scott.
Come here, fish. Glad to have y'all. Actually, is, is Jerry, is Jerry, is Jerry out tonight? Let's see, yeah, okay.
Well, so this is, this is everybody. Marla, you wanna come up? You sure? All right, ma'am. So, if this, if this is everybody, then I guess we can go ahead and kick it off.
Yeah, thank you, thank you guys for being here, yeah.
Oh, three more minutes.
Somebody else might want to come in, that's right.
So, this is.
You're right.
Yeah, don't say anything, though. I didn't, I just didn't want them to sit out there in the audience and feel like they had to get up and speak at this podium or anything. You're welcome to sit up there.
I went home, CJ.
Oh, yeah.
We were talking on the couch.
Tom downstairs trying to figure what they were for.
He's like.
Then just there, whatever. So, that's we're not wearing.
Yeah, I'm not saying that.
We did, but I couldn't.
Not saying that at all.
I did a lot of the change before.
Maybe if he has a guy. He probably has it.
Oh, I did wrong. So, I worked at the bullpen, I was looking at.
Oh, my goodness.
I was looking for.
That's hilarious.
Something wrong, she left, went to another place, but, uh, went down, drove back, and, and, uh, started my day all over again. I went in at nine, just to make sure every time.
Okay, we're good?
We're, we're good, we're ready to go now.
Okay, great deal.
I appreciate you having us. Uh, we've, we've got together the other day, we were discussing, you know, this, let's say a city council just meet with us like we did once before. Where we can look at, everybody kinda eye to eye, we had two guys missing, we got one missing, so. But, no, we, uh, we've, uh, I think we're all in for fire departments, and we want to do what we can. We're stepping, it's kinda like Scott was saying this morning, from a year ago to now, we're taking a huge step. And, uh, we just wanna come talk to you about, about the, the money, the situation with money. There's not, I know that Marla can speak more to this about what's proposed right now, we'd be spending more than a hundred percent of what we could spend legally this year, just on the fact that that would leave us nothing. So, you know, we're not even looking at pay raises. I mean, we're looking at the cost of stuff, the equipment that's going up in the county and stuff that we have to have, the vehicles and stuff like that. So, we wanna come over here and kinda just talk to you, say, we're, you know, we're in. I think that we can't, we can't take the biggest step of what y'all want this year. Next year, we'll do a little more and more, we kinda, kinda start, say, then we just kinda talk to y'all about it. About what, what we, what we can do this year when we start going into budget, um, first June, the end of this month, or as first June. So, so we wanna come and talk to you and, and tell you, first of all, we, we are dedicated to this, and I think that all of us are, are excited about getting to this. I think that we have a lot of people out in the county that can't get insurance on their houses anymore, and I think this will help, uh, the county as well as the city as, as we're doing it. And so, we, we wanna come talk to you about, about the money, we can talk to you about what we can do this year, and what we did. What was the proposals, like, million this year?
No, the proposal was, uh, uh, two hundred thousand beginning June first for the end of thi- this, our fiscal year. That would be through September thirtieth, and then, and then beginning in, uh, October, six hundred thousand. And it'd be, it'd be a total million because we put in, it was a sixty-fourty as we discussed, you know, in previous meetings. And the city would be forty percent, the, the county would be sixty percent, and, um, so that was, it was just.
That starting October first?
October first. It, it would need to be on our fiscal year, so, um, 'cause that, that'd give us the ability to budget.
Marla helped me out here on our budgets, uh.
We're on calendar here.
We're on calendar here.
Okay.
We don't have a budget running for this year, most October to January, so we gotta do the budget, and our, our, our start January first. I sw- I also talked to you this year, but going more or less fifty-fifty on fire department, we continue to hundred percent on, on ambulance, and see if y'all will go fifty-fifty on that. Uh, now, we, we did put, you know, I know the s- the sixty-fourty on fire calls right now, ambulance is best, we got Brandon, I think, Marla, did you bring that? Brandon, instead of stuff, it's about fifty-five, forty-five county ambulance. We, we have no problem, we continue to spend a hundred percent, it's about a hundred and thirty thousand here that we pay for ambulance service. And we are coming back at, on my, the one, we'll go up to, we're, is it up this year or the next year?
I'm sorry, I think.
That's the annual, the annual, so.
Oh, it's, it's the end of next year, yeah.
End of next year, so, we'll probably do a little bit, and they're coming, and, and, uh, it's great ambulance service, we don't have any problems with you, uh.
How's it, a hundred and forty thousand?
Yes, and, uh, so, well, like I said, we will continue paying that, and, and going back. Uh, and we just wanna get y'all's feedback and what y'all thought about it, and, uh, kinda work with y'all on that and things. Uh, but we are limited on how much we regularly can, just like y'all are, you know, the, the three point five, you know, we, we've chosen the five hundred thousand. Uh, every year, you know, we have to go up to that much to, just to get, uh, with pay raises, 'cause pay raises usually only go to four hundred thousand, and that's just a year, that's a good at that. And we're not gonna be able to do it up this year at all. And we're okay with that, we really are. We're okay with not, not pay raises, 'cause we do wanna get a fire department, we're gonna make a full-time fire department. We want continuing to grow with that every year. I do want to, in the future, as I told you before, I do want to build a new fire station with ambulance, ambulance, you know, personnel station with a new fire department, and move them out from down here, and, and simply, simply, and, and, so. So, we, we're just, we just wanna throw this out and kinda talk to y'all, and, and see who y'all have a screw, and, and, uh, what y'all, I know y'all worry about a budget, what y'all, y'all worry kinda about a budget. We have, we have very little, we have three of the fire departments we're gonna continue to, we still got North Franklin, Hurley, and South Franklin, we're gonna continue to support. Now, we have to support them, like we fixed to support Mount Vernon Fire Department, but, but I think they kinda understand that to this point, uh, talking to them, uh, Max might be a little. Chief, chief, what, what do you think? What do you think, is, I talked to the other fire department, what do you think that they're doing, someone out there struggling themselves?
Uh, so, full-time, you know, still. So, we have chiefs meeting, uh, a couple weeks ago, and I had talked to them about that we had to do the, you know, the, the two guys, Monday through Friday. And I asked what was the pros, what are the cons, what did they said that we need to change on that. Uh, Andy, uh, Emery up north said his only complaint was that it wasn't, for us, they said, well, that made me feel good. Eddie's response to that, he didn't, he didn't see anything that he thought we should change, he thought everything was great so far. And then Brandon's pretty new to Hurley, so he wasn't, I mean, he's a pitcher, so, uh, so, I mean, I think, I think it's working great, uh, at, right now. And we, you know, we're just trying to push, I think we're just trying to get something, uh, a, a little bit more, you know, obviously, uh, for the county.
We, we kinda felt, we kinda felt at first that there was kinda a bit jealousy amongst the elements, but I think they've kinda come around to the fact that, when you kill the firemen, I think there was, you know, everything's about not fire, everything's about not fire. And, well, this, when you have a twenty-four seven fire department, of the time that you get to call it, the time you call it off, you're. And well, this, when you have a twenty-four seven fire department, of the time that you get the call, the time you call volunteer fire department. They're gonna be there probably faster than, Hig- Higgin's more up in the Higginport, uh, North Franklin Fire Department, cause they're there. And that's what we really want here. And we really think this will help the insurance companies. If there's a, some kind of rating, it'll help.
Uh, so that was a good example. Uh, there was a car fire at twenty-one and, and three zero seven, that goes across the bay on there. And there was a truck caught, caught a fire, they called the South Franklin, Eddie got on radio immediately. He said, hey, it's sitting out burning. We showed up, we had four guys on the engines, the rest of the guys hanging out at the station. We had the fire, we were there, put the fire out before Eddie was pulled up. And he was, and I can tell you as a volunteer, and he saw, maybe he hurts, all of a sudden, that's just part, you know, a little bit older, he was thankful. He was ecstatic because they pulled up and they basically, more of the South Franklin showed up. We had the fire out, so they just helped me do that, you know, and he, he appreciated it.
We, we've also started paying our, our volunteer firemen, we're all correct. We had some issues with that. So, you know, we are, we're, we're just wanting to talk finances, basically.
So do y'all have a proposal for this year?
What we kinda wanted to be telling y'all about, about and just kinda, kinda work through the, the, kinda talk it out where y'all would be willing to make this. At this point, uh, like I said, we, we can do a little more each, each year, but right now, it's, uh. We're kind of in a quandary about finances and things right now, cause we can't do everything at once right now. Next year, like I said, we've talked, we're, we're kinda staring at it, we'll talk to chief about it. But, but we're in and we just gotta figure out where we're gonna go with this money.
So when we say next year, Judge, you're talking about ni- your fiscal year?
Next, our, yes, the next budget, this budget we're gonna work on from twenty-six and then June we'll talk about twenty, twenty-seven and, you know. So that's when we're gonna-
So your funding would be based on your, your fiscal year?
It would be the first year, I mean, we can make the adjustment for the next year, but the first year, we would have to come in January until we. Cause our money, our biggest money comes in in January.
Right.
And then after that, we would have the, the fund and the availability, which is part of the budget, to make that change. And we won't be able to make that change in the beginning until our new fiscal year's gone.
Gotcha.
That's understood. Yeah, we had Blake pull together a budget, cause one thing is we're, that, the firehouse, we're gonna add on to it. So to put bunkhouses on the, on the south side where the main entrance doors are, we're gonna build those bunkhouses for male and female and the shower setup and stuff. So we can be twenty-four hours, so that's gotta happen. But we got, and I think we got a few sets of quotes on that. So we got an idea what that, and that's, it's actually fairly reasonable, cause the building's there, utilities are all there, so, but, um.
The building's almost four years old. So when it was built, it was obviously not built for overnight stay and things like that, so what it brings up to, 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 to build a house.
It's not terrible though, yeah. I know it's fine by-
I've got three quarters, I've got two more coming in.
Well, remember you had the, the fifty thousand, we did a budget amendment for it and we can utilize that, that, or that, or, or something else. One time is, is not hard on us when we're doing a budget amendment, but a perpetual becomes a little bit of an issue if we haven't, we don't have a budget.
Yep, understood, yeah.
So we just, uh, I, I think, I think, um, we're, we're taking the biggest step, we're taking the first big step here. There's always so much of step we can take out now. So I thought we, and we wanna come over here and just tell you that we are eager and willing to do this. It's just may not be as fast as y'all want. It's not Charlie, it's just-
No, it's all, it's all, I-
It's just need in the county.
Yeah, this is, we're, we're all one community here, trying to get this thing figured out, yeah.
I didn't bring my paper, I couldn't find it quickly, sorry.
Yes ma'am. One point zero zero two seven, or seven two nine.
That would be the first year, correct?
Yes ma'am.
If, if we could manage to get it eight or eight fifty, that would get us to where we could, we, we could, we could make that one for the first year. And then that, that gets our baseline up and, and then we can start growing from there. Without a, without a-
Right.
You saying first year, you want first budget year?
Yes, I'm sorry, I forget, yes, I forget how we did it, but, but our first year, yes.
Would be the eight hundred and fifty thousand?
Now, we could actually protect, not so many, but we could, um, pay the first payment.
So, so Marla, if I'm hearing you right, I'm hearing you say that, that if we get it to eight hundred or eight fifty total, with a fifty fifty split, is what the judge was saying?
Mm-hmm.
That would almost max us out, but we could probably hang, hang them.
We could hang them out and not, it wouldn't cripple us in other areas, that's our, our biggest concern is we don't have to be crippled to do something that we might have to, to have to run.
Yeah.
So at least it's about seventy-five thousand, but, so we'll get five million. So, eight fifty, I think, probably better one by and lose stuff. The sheriff's got money, he got money, you know?
It's hard, it is, we, we get it. It, it is, but we've, I mean-
But this is just the first year, then it's a little better with all, cause we did this kind of, stare at it and our budget can grow from that. And that's what we're, it's just this first year is gonna kinda kill us, the first one. And like I said, we'll be putting almost a hundred percent of it into fire department, which is, yeah, so.
I think we all know, county wise, our, our constituents would be excited. Our family and friends out there to understand that we're taking this kind of a step together, they get, they'll get it.
We're jumping out there pretty big on that, and that's, we, we don't have a problem with that, cause we know we have, we have been there the last ten years.
And we wanna get to where you're talking about and, and continue to grow, but we just have to take one big chunk and then, and then like, and then one small chunk to that.
So a follow up on that would be then, we're looking at the January budget for y'all on that. So a follow up on that would be then, between now and January, it would just be paper call like you're doing?
Yes, we could do that, or, or we could catch up, I know you guys start in October, so you could go ahead and do the budget in October and then we could catch up in January.
Gotcha.
That's when our budget really actually starts.
Gotcha.
And then we'd have to, to try to do a budget amendment, we're trying to find another amendment.
Okay.
We would have to tax base there.
We need to re, get with him and kinda recalculate.
For, for a time, the sheriff, he might be smart, allow us to be last, I think, in my mind.
That's, that's what I was gonna say, I'm interested in this more than I am from the chief's board, I have some money in the council, he made housing funds that we, that I have, so, delivering housing image. That I probably come up with some, that look towards some of this later this year on the building or add it to what we're putting in, y'all.
To get us on the council.
Okay.
I tell you, he got money, he got money.
Thanks sheriff, appreciate, yeah.
I got, I got a little.
We'll figure this-
But, and, but I, we, I visited Marla about that today, so we're gonna look at the numbers, what we can use out of that. I think that's, we're probably gonna have to look at it on that.
Thank you. Not be closer than we think, yeah.
So maybe what we need to do then is to, based on what you told us, is to sit down, you and I and Kathy and put a pencil to it.
Right, so I'll, you know, I can, there'll be some stuff here, I'll just, get rid of my, I got. So, sorry guys, uh, both of the, so, yeah, my, my biggest concerns is the same thing when Andy, uh, Enslay came to talk to you guys and talked about, you know, the biggest concern is to have, uh, two people, at minimum two people at all times together and what you're up. That, so that would be, you know, that would be my biggest concern, making sure we have that now, not having a part-time person. That, that'd be a little, you know, just that person would be to fill you, those, those six papers that were off, you know, throughout the year. And just like most, as the fireplace, uh, when they're off, somebody's gotta take their spot. So those are things, but I can try to work, you know, work around that. I mean, I can try to, I can sort of tell them that, you know, I want this to hap- I mean, I want this to happen, just like you guys, just like the council does. Uh, if I, you know, live in this county, uh, as a, as a homeowner, paying insurance, this is, this is really the, the, the only way that we're gonna be able to bring the ISO rating back. And, uh, we're gonna be-
It's gonna get better, that's what I want, I want to tell you, it's gonna get better in the year, we're gonna struggle this first year.
Right.
We can do it and, uh, I think Marla can, and we can too, and we can also talk to our congressman, we can get, he knows about lithium. So hopefully that somehow can help us out.
They're fully aware, yeah.
I, I won't say nap, but I'll be-
Marla. I'll, I'll, I'll twist his arm a little bit, okay? Just a little bit.
We just pass our state inspection, so we're good to go. No, I, I, I mean, I can, I can revert that back, I, I want this to happen, so.
We'll de- we'll definitely pressure test this thing and make sure we got the have to haves, need to haves, any luxury, if it's something we think we can get by till year two on this or three, I mean, we'll all talk about it.
Year two, I'm, we're good.
The key is, is what's happening right now, and it's been happening for the last few years. And we, but this is a, this is the right time for us, is Franklin County, which, Mount Vernon's Franklin County, right? So it's, it's the right time for this county to take that step forward and thankfully, we're in position to do it.
Well, that, 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 and I, we, this is the only way we really, both of us can afford this, to do this, to start doing it toward that. Like she said, it's just this first step, we wanna come look at it eye to eye, because we're here.
Yeah.
We're doing everything in our power to make this work. I have any jealousies, I don't have any outside interference coming into this, but, but you gotta have this, you know, if we're gonna grow in any way, you're gonna have to have this.
That's right.
And we talked about that several times, you know, with the, with the, with the act coming in, that's a, that's a big, that's a big, we all know this, and, um.
And all of us have this in place and all that, it's hard to handle, so we're gonna be forming this and continue to, to further. Okay, you said about that anyway, are you asking us to work that into our?
We don't know, we're, we're-
That's separate. They're assuming that.
Maybe eventually, but not right now. It's, it's, uh, I, I do, I do want, and maybe, we may be all wrong, by the time it happens, but I would like to say, centralize the fire stations with, big enough to put two, two ambulances there and we can have a, kind of living space, a bunk.
And a heliport next to it.
And a heliport, bear in mind, we got mosses in our air, we're free, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, but no, it's, 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 it's gonna get better and, but, you know, when we was talking the other day, I said, I, I wanna make the city council and just kinda look them all eye to eye and say, hey, you know. We, uh, we're here to, we're here to do what we can and, but we're, we be struggling this first year to make the goals, to all hit set out, I think it's, it's, there's no way we'd have to start again, I would like that. We have to do a lot.
Well, I, 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 Judge, I feel like, and commissioners, I feel like, the other day we had chiefs meeting, so. So the fire, the fire department's kinda like, you know, uh, everybody's territory under this.
Oh yeah.
So cities are that way, every county's are that way, it's, it's that, all across the board. So the other night, Josh and Tess, by this, we were talking about it, and I talked to Eddie, and we were all, had chiefs meeting, and I made a comment about removing the fire districts in the county. And this would help our ISO. And I thought, well, man, they'll, they're not gonna like that. Eddie's first name, Eddie goes, well, if it'll help with the lake, I'm for it. And I was like, oh, and, and Andy up north, he said, yeah, he said, let's do it. So basically it would be just one big fire. That allows, that allows me and the city of Winsboro to, when we get these phone calls from these, uh, underwriters from insurance. They say, no, but that is part of our district, we can run down there. And that helps, that will help the homeowners. For, for Mount Vernon, that has a Mount Vernon address on the north side of the lake, that will help them some. And those that have Stroggins address on, on the, on the south side of the lake, the, uh, Winsboro can run with, cause they get the same calls that we get. And Max had told me he's gotten some of the calls.
Well, what do we need, do we need to do anything on making it from fire district?
No, sir, I can, I just, I'll just make a phone call over to the council, everyone's over there.
So the, the commissioners' court or the city council doesn't need to take any action on that?
No, because the, the, the actual districts that we have there, that I understand, have never been really voted on, just, that was agreed by the chiefs. So by, as part, as a part of being agreed by the chiefs, just to erase it. And so we will keep those districts, but they will be EMS response districts. So dispatch will keep those, they'll still have this, they'll still see that, but as a fire, this, the city, the truck would run on all fire issued out in the county. Now, medical calls, it would still go back to, uh, the actual districts. And I would come, I could come up with a response, a, a matrix to show you what we'd be responding to out in the county and, uh.
Well, once again, I'm just, we'll leave the money to you. Y'all just control. Y'all just worry about it. No, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm thrilled. I'm on the lake, north side of the lake, I, I live there.
Right.
And I have the whole lake is on me, so I can get those phone calls too. I mean, why are there insurance, why not renew it? I would go to the same bank and send it from the window, so.
Right.
I mean, I'm, I'm all, I'm about, there's a problem, look for a solution.
Right, absolutely, that's, that's what we're doing here, let's go. And I tried to, I explained to several homeowners that it's not, they say, well, I live on the lake, I should have, you know, water supply should not be an issue. Well, it, you don't have a hydrant. And so I tried to explain to them the draft and all this stuff plays into your ISO. And these are things as a county, we will have to come together and start training on and doing this and helping them there around the lake and things like that.
Will you feel pretty comfortable? Chief, will, will that here down, back down to nine?
Uh, not, not immediately, we'll, we will have to do a pump test, kinda like, they did this in Hoppe's County years ago. And so I believe we could get it lower than nine. Now, all this, all of this, so a good example of this is when, uh, Harley wanted to get rid of their engine. And I said, do not sell that engine, do not let that engine leave this county. That engine, even as a reserve engine, is worth points on your ISO. I said, so do not let it leave. Well, luckily it ended up in Northland, so we still have it to our, you know, we might have to move some, some apparatus around in the county. But it's gonna save, well, you know, it could save, it'll save the big, big interest a lot of money, and so it'll be well worth it in the long run. But I had to go out and, you know, give it to Eddie and give it to the guy, I don't even know what all, our trucks we have in the county. I just know what we have, but pumbers and tankers are where you get your points.
Well, I know we've discussed it and, and I know I've got faith left here, we don't have nothing out east of town, so anything like this right here is gonna help.
Oh, for sure.
It's gotta help. Cause there's nothing out there.
Five mile radius, pretty much, right. Five mile radius of Mount Vernon is gonna be a, a huge impact from this, it's gonna all be recognized. Blake, isn't that right, five mile radius generally is, a five mile radius will definitely recognize the benefit, generally is what they're gonna, right?
Yeah, it's like, now, each insurance company, their underwriters, so when they call and they're from New York or something and, and we talk about it, uh, each one is, uh, fluctuates a little. Some are, some say five, some say five and a half, and a couple say ten. So it depends on the insurance company to underwrite. So, uh, I guess I need to start writing those names down.
Some of this is ten.
Yeah, I mean-
Well, I would've given it ten, it would be hard to cover them all over the lake and stuff, so.
There's a lot of houses that get picked up in five, six miles of, of the fire department here. You know, so that's a big improvement and you continue to improve from there. I mean, it's the first big honking step we're talking about doing here.
Cause your, 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 your brokers for your insurance, they want you to write that policy for you. It's your underwriters who catch, this is what their job is to go out and so when they call me and ask me about my address, and I say, well, that's not, it's not in my fire district, that's in a different fire district. And so then they look how far we are, and I said, well, I can't write you a letter, you're outside my area. By removing the district, but does that allow me to get to do that?
Y'all have any questions, do you have a few things?
I don't think so, I mean, I thought just, thank you big time, you know, for reaching out saying, let's have a, let's have a sit together, cause we all need to do this. Or more.
We really need to.
More, more, yeah.
What?
I was gonna say real quick, thanks Blake, and these guys right here, you know, since they've been in the fire station twenty-four hours or, or day shift and if somebody's manning a truck, it's nice to see them pull it out, lay it front of us or anybody else. And getting seen before. For years, we've been getting there as police officers, probably fifteen, sometimes twenty minutes before anybody gets there. And now they're getting there before we are. And so, you know, I was even looking to buy some portable jobs for our county cars too, because we had a incident off the town where, you know, someone, heard a cop by, a lady had a wreck and we couldn't get her out of the car, it's a, it's a lot of shit. And so I was about to buy some jobs to be able to get. But if they're meeting us there, there's not even reason for you to send the money, although putting our cars, if they're only there for the real. So, you know, that's saving us money, that's another reason I don't mind taking some of that money and putting it forward to, to make this thing better and make it work. Because I've already seen the benefits. Because I've already seen the benefits just having them there here and there, and I said, say that, while I had everybody, it's, it's been huge difference, I've been here tonight too, I'm never, very seldom, they ever be this, they did all the time, so.
And there's a couple things I also took the council for taking this step last year, I was not here, but last year, taking the step to add the one through Friday, that was huge, so, uh, response times are, are, in the fire service, they're always in place too, but in fire service, response times are, are instrumental. Uh, so right now, we average one point eight, uh, one point eight minutes outside the station on Monday through Friday, six thirty, six thirty, that has, that's how long it takes, when we get, we get a call, so in less than two minutes, we're in the truck, we're rolling wherever we're going to. Outside of that, it's almost eight minutes, you know, after six thirty nine, so that gives you an idea of how much it draws, uh, if you can do that.
Eight minutes, eight minutes, in North Franklin, it takes somebody to get out of bed, when they're going to brush their teeth, or sit, walk around, and get dressed, get into their vehicle, and drive their, y'all are.
Right, right, we, we can cut a lot of ground, and that's driving ten miles an hour, it's been a right, that's, these guys do great, uh, to, to, another thing, I, I want to, I've stressed, I, and I want to stress this also, is they're looking from, from Dallas to Texan County, we're tech, we're basically the only city and county that does not have twenty four hour, uh, for a fire. And we have an interstate here, it's twenty nine thousand vehicles a day passing through here, we have four truck stops, fixing to have a, Sharon knows, uh, uh, a rest stop for the truckers out here, and I know that Hopkins County has some issues with them, uh, so, these are things that.
Free, I'm not allowed to go to tech stop.
It's why I would like to have, you know, we don't, there, we're the only one between Rockland and Texan County that does that, and so that's why I'm, I'm pushing for this also, uh, the car count is only going to increase, uh, you know, and, and in the future. Lowering the ISO not only affects the homeowners, but anything below a five goes to your businesses, so any incoming businesses, a, a five is worth your residential stock, that's, with anything below a five doesn't help, doesn't benefit the residents. Anything below a five, down to a one, brings in your industry and your businesses, that, because they have to pay the exact same taxes, and their ratings are based off the ISO, just like a residential home. So those are, that's why you see a lot of these bigger cities, and smaller towns, shoot for an ISO one, that means, hey, we, we want you, we want you to hear word, and give you the lowest rate possible as a business, and so those are, uh, goals, you know, for us also.
It's the call you never get as a business, we talk about recruiting business to a town, you can do some recruiting, that's, that's hard to do, they're looking, they're looking for places that have ISO ratings at a certain level, just like people in the chemical industry.
Yeah.
We look for, like, who's a, who's a one, who's a two, we're not looking beyond that, because insurance rates were outrageous, you just don't get the call.
You don't get the call, you don't get considered, so, let's get.
And we're, you know, Mount Vernon, see, Mount Vernon is a four, and we're, I got Iberstone, there's a few more things, and then I will call for a, a rate for pacification, I think we'll drop to a three possibly, so, we just have to see. After that, we call for one of the lower, the, the, it's all about the money, so the more equipment you can throw at the ISO, the higher, the higher rating you can get, or the lower the rating you can get, the more points you can get, uh, they want you to, they want you to spend money, but, so.
I might just say, first of all, great work, and I appreciate the, your, your personality and how Blake works with everybody in this county has been appreciated, I've told you that, o- o- over and over and over again, and that's what all these guys say, Craig. It's a breath of fresh air, but that's how you get things done, when people can work together and you can communicate like y'all do, um, so let's, let's try to go through and pressure test the numbers and find what's the net, the absolutes are. And then try to be back together with you guys, okay?
We'll do, we'll do everything we can.
Okay.
And, and we'll, we'll scrub the numbers as closely as we can, okay? And then we'll circle back, let us do that, and then, uh, circle back to you and Marla initially, and then y'all get with the court, if that's okay, you guys?
I, I don't, Marla's. I'm being.
She's, she, Marla's been a great help, and I really appreciate all of her, her assistance with this, through this whole thing, so she's been a real, very, very helpful for Blake and I, so thank you.
Also, we had a little update going over Paul's building, and he was showing us where they cut that, y'all had worked on that, we appreciate y'all doing that, that's going to be, that's going to be great, we appreciate y'all doing that.
It's cool, I tell you what, people are excited about it, volunteers are coming out of the woodwork now, saying, I want to help be a part of it, it's like, there you go, that's what's supposed to happen.
So, uh, Dr. Blais, Mac, Mac, Mac Blais.
Okay.
Max Gray.
I'm not letting you attack during some of the, you just never know, right, you just never know.
Well, well, hey, I'll, let me go ahead and adjourn the meeting, and that way we can all visit on the way out here, but unless anybody has anything else, we're good.
Do you need a turn too?
Do y'all want, do y'all's first or?
Do y'all's first.
How much did I adjourn?
Same, on first turn?
Same.
That didn't take long for me.
How much did I adjourn?
Same.
Aye?
Aye.